All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, May 31st at 6:06 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Teresa A. Moss, present by remote.
That's Excedurianian.
And Veronica Cal. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It's also live on Channel 9, and it will be posted on the town's YouTube after the fact. 1.4 chairman's additions or deletions. I'd like to add the cons con fee schedule to the agenda as number 4.11 under meeting business. Does that work? Chaz and Teresa said good. I would also like to delete the minutes for 3:15, 2022. Yes, those are not yet ready. That's me. And are there any other additions or deletions, Chaz, Teresa, or Eric, or Ross? Anything else?
I am not.
Okay, thank you. Public comment period. Are there any comments to be made? All right, seeing none, I'm going on to 1.6. The minutes for 5:11, 2022, is there a motion? Teresa, are you going to make the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to, I'm sorry, to approve the minutes of what are we, which ones are due we're doing first?
On May 11th, 2022.
May 11th, 2022.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, thank you. We have no tons appointments tonight. So moving on to appointments of officials and personnel. Under 3.1, is there a motion to appoint Michelle Dole as constable for a term from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025?
Make a motion to appoint Michelle Dodd as constable for a term from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. I have a little bit, just a little bit. Last year, we were waiting to see if police reform changed anything as far as constables go, and so far, it hasn't. Last year, we made the appointment that was up for, as a one-year appointment. This is a three-year. I guess at this point, since nothing has changed, my thought is to just appoint for three years going forward for anybody whose terms are up until we hear otherwise. And when we hear otherwise, we'll make changes accordingly. So.
Yeah, my understanding was that that was going to be, I thought it was going to go through the legislature quicker than what it did, and I agree with you. So I think it's best just to continue with our best practice until we, until that gets resolved.
Okay, Teresa, any comments?
No, I'm all set.
Hey, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Michelle Dole as constable for a three-year term? I guess we need to do a roll call vote, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Second appointment, is there a motion to appoint Linda Mack as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024?
I make a motion to appoint Linda Mack as a member of the Conservation Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I did go through the volunteer response form. The candidate is very highly qualified for the position. They have served on the Townsend Conservation Commission from 1988 to 2004, I think that says. And has been a past conservation agent for the town of Townsend back in the 90s. So I give this a thumbs up, and they got done through the proper process.
So I will also add to that, Linda did attend the Conservation Commission meeting, and there was a vote of the Conservation Commissioners. Anything further? All right, then, we're ready to vote, so roll call vote, please.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes.
Welcome, Linda, welcome back, Linda, I should say.
All right, 3.3. Every year, the MRPC asks for a member of the Planning Board to be appointed and a member of the Select Board to be appointed. The Select Board member for MRPC is an alternate, so a non-voting member. The Planning Board member votes. We will also, on the next meeting, consider an appointment for the Monticujus Joint Transportation Council. I just got that email today. So that'll be on the next agenda. So I am currently the MRPC rep for the Select Board. And I, the good thing about these meetings is that you learn a lot. And it's how this, and also these meetings, and also the MJTC, is how we've learned about the UKWP grants, the DLTA grants, things like that. So I am actually the alternate appointee for MRPC, the Select Board appointee, and I am also the MJTC rep currently. So I just thought that we need to consider someone for MRPC. And I am willing to step aside on MRPC if there is someone else who is willing and has the time. It's one meeting a month.
Yeah, we had, we had the discussion last year, and I said that I would take it up for the following year, if you remember back to that conversation. So I will be more than willing to volunteer for the, for this, this term.
Okay, so Teresa, are you good with that?
Yeah, I just need to understand, though, it's on my list of which places I am as a liaison?
It is on that list, and I'm not sure why. I think you have MRPC but not MJTC as liaison.
So I'm more than willing to let Chaz do it, but do I have additional responsibilities as liaison, or does that need to be?
You are so gracious, Madam Clerk.
I am.
Well, my, my, my thinking was that I would take the MRPC role if you would take the MJTC role.
Certainly.
Okay, well, MJTC is next week.
Next week, but.
So, okay. So for, I should say for MRPC, we are a non-voting member. For MJTC, we, both members vote for MJTC. I'm sure. So anyway. So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint a member of the Select Board as an alternative representative to the Monticujus Representative Planning Committee, MRPC, for a term from July 1st, 22, to June 30th, 2023.
And that member would be Chaz. All right. Slapping things off, left and right. All right, and I will, did you second, or do you want?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Congratulations, Chaz.
You are welcome, too.
All right. Our next appointment is for Water Department seasonal interns. So is there a motion, Teresa?
I make a motion that we appoint Everett Smith, I'm sorry. Can't read my, the handwriting. James, is it James?
Jamison.
Jamison, I'm sorry. Jamison, Gavett, Corren, and Max, I can't read that name either. My printer is really late. In India, halt, as part-time, temporary seasonal interns in the Water Department contingent upon core checks and pre-employment physicals with a one-year probation period. And I apologize for butchering your names.
Second that.
Discussion.
One-year probationary period?
We have the same question.
We shook our heads on that, too. Only working for three months.
This is a personnel policies and procedures thing that we should look at because personnel policies and procedures statement and appointments are with a one-year probationary period. Same, same for the rec, so.
I think that, so we actually had a discussion about this. It's probably not necessary to put that into the motion because it's in the personnel policy. The personnel policy will apply whether you say that they have to have a one-year probationary period or not in the motion. So going forward, we may just not say it in the motion. Leave that out of the motion that is going to apply. Like, we don't say how much sick time people get or other things in the personnel policy. So I don't think that's necessary. But I think it's probably a good practice to keep a one-year probationary period in the policy because it's possible that some of these people may move on to, to be hired for more permanent employment, in which case we would, their date of hire, we'd still want them on a probationary period.
That makes sense. Even if they're seasonal, it doesn't really matter if it's a one-year.
Yeah, they're going to be on probation the whole time they're here if they're just seasonal. But if they do move into a full-time position, as I know there's a possibility in the Water Department, then we want them to know that, yeah, that, that's.
That way, because if they're seasonal, then, and they decide to become full-time, the start time is when they started as the enter.
Right, in the, in the rearview mirror.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Moving on to 3.5. Motion to appoint Elizabeth Serene as a member of the Rec Commission for a term to expire on April 30th, 2024. I thought that this is an elected board, correct?
Yes.
I thought that any appointment could only be until the next, until the next town vote.
Yeah, it should be.
So April, and is it the 30th or just April 2023?
Kathy had originally said to put in the 30th because it goes in around April, May, actually, towards the end of, or the very beginning of May.
It's the last Monday of May.
Yeah.
For the town, not May, April, for the town.
April, yeah. So I don't know if you guys want it just April 2023.
Just say it as April, everything.
I would make it just to expire in April 2023. So is there a motion?
Before I make the motion, do we say 2023? Because it's, my paperwork says 2022, which doesn't make sense.
Mine says 2024. Just say 2023, Teresa.
Okay, my, well, must have been way too early. I make a motion to appoint Jennifer Eaton as a member of the Townsend.
No, no, Elizabeth Serene, Elizabeth Serene. 3.5.
Okay, I must have old minutes. I printed them this morning, so I must not have the most minute.
You're looking at 3.6.5. This is the, the page before.
I'm sorry, yep, I do have, I apologize. I make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Serene as a member of the Recreation Committee for a term to expire April 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Did you mean to say 2023, or was it 2024?
It's 2023. It's the next town election, so.
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chaz Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, now we have several Recreation Commission appointments. So Teresa, do you, do you have these on?
Yeah, I found, I would, I didn't realize this printed front to back, that's my problem. I'm good.
All right. So we're going to start with 3.5.1. Would you like to make a motion?
As I make a motion to appoint Gillian O'Keefe, Linda Garment, Ryland Arnold as seasonal summer recreation coordinator for summer 2022 at a pay rate of 14.25 per hour in accordance with mass minimum wage and Recreation Committee pay guidelines contingent upon pre-employment physical and COVID check.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Teresa A. Moss.
Chaz Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, moving on to 3.5.2.
Congratulations, Gillian, thanks for jumping on. Riley, too? Riley. Riley, congratulations.
I make a motion that we reappoint Riley Genron, Riot, Gallant, Abigail Hurst, Alusa. I don't know.
I love.
Greta Helter, new physician, Sean O'Shea, DeCosta as a seasonal summer rec coordinators for summer 2022 at the pay rate of 14.25 per hour in accordance with mass minimum wage and Recreation Committee pay guidelines contingent upon pre-employment physicals and core reach.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Ready to vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chaz Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So welcome, Riley, Wyatt, Abigail, Alicia, Greta, and Shay.
Go to the row there.
All right. All right, 3.5.3.
Make a motion that we reappoint Tim Burton, Savannah Gilmett as seasonal summer recreational counselor for summer 2022 at a pay rate of $15 an hour in accordance with mass maximum minimum wage, I'm sorry, and recreation pay guidelines contingent upon pre-employment physical and core check.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. 3.5.4.
Make a motion that we reappoint Renee Serene as seasonal summer rec coordinator for summer 2022 at a pay rate of 14.75 an hour in accordance with mass minimum wage and Recreation Committee pay guidelines contingent upon pre-employment physical and core check.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, or Teresa, roll call vote. Teresa?
Say again?
Just roll call vote.
Oh, Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, 3.5.5.
I make a motion that we appoint Ryan Loverie as seasonal lead sport and activities coordinator for summers 2022 at the pay rate of 15.25 an hour in accordance with Recreation Committee guidelines approval contingent upon pre-employment physical and core check.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So welcome, Ryan. Moving on to 3.5.6.
I make a motion that we appoint Megan Donovan as a seasonal lead arts and craft coordinator for summer 2022 at the pay rate of 15.75 an hour in accordance with the Recreation Commission pay guidelines approval contingent upon pre-employment physical and core check.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. And 3.5.7, the last motion for the Rec Department, Teresa?
I make a motion that we appoint Kimberly Casper, Erin Shawn, and a new position as junior operations assistant supervisory position for summer 2022 at the pay rate of $17 an hour in accordance with Recreation Committee pay guidelines approval contingent upon reappointment physicals and core checks.
My second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I did just want to get some more guidelines on the Recreation Committee. Are they even, are they close to being self-funded?
Are you asking about the programs?
Yeah.
Or are you asking about the staff? So the staff, with the exception of myself and Bonnie, is all self-funded by the programs.
Okay.
We only have a $2,500 operating budget from the town for that sort of thing. And then Bonnie and myself are, well, actually, minus $10,000 are funded through the town.
Okay, and this new, this is a new position? Is it like an upgrade of an old position, or is it a completely new position?
Oh, this position's been in play for about five years now. Where it says rehire new position is because it's a new position for Evan Shawn, not because it's a new position overall.
Oh, that's where, okay, that's where I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
He's being rehired, but it's not, because he's worked for us before, but this is a new position for him, so he's not being rehired to the same job.
I misunderstood what the line meant. Thank you very much for the clarity. That's all I.
Is that, is there anything else I can answer for you, Teresa?
Nope, good to go. Teresa A. Moss is, yes?
Excedurianian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you very much. Everybody.
Welcome aboard, everybody.
Yeah. We're all set with our space?
We are set with our space, yeah. Good to go, we're ready.
I'll drop in.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody can drop in, especially when we do our community open events.
Yep.
So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it for going to all that for us. You guys can all come on now. Or you can stay and listen, we got a lot of things going on today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to 3.6. We have several resignations here. We're just announcing these, we don't actually have to accept them, do we? Or is it?
I don't, I don't think you need to formally accept them.
I think we've always just announced. All right, so the first one is a resignation from Teresa Walsh as interim town accountant effective May 27th, 2022. So Terry's last day was last Friday, Ross?
I want to thank Terry for her commitment to Townsend since I've been here, and since she's come back from retirement. She's been fantastic in keeping that department going. She has been fantastic as far as making sure everything's filed correctly from a finance perspective, asking the right questions, asking maybe the hard questions when someone comes in something that she doesn't think is quite right. The town owes her a lot for her diligence and professionalism. I want to thank Terry.
And I will second that.
I will third that.
I thank Terry a lot for coming in last June and.
Helping us out in a very tight situation.
Right, for the end of last year, and then for all of this year, pretty much.
Yeah, she was very impressive during the short time we had to work with. So pleased to say that Laurie from Melansky is here today, already started her helping us out now on a sort of interim contract basis, so we have coverage in that office.
Which is great.
Yes.
Hard to not have coverage in that office. Thank you, Terry. Wonderful having her, and also Dick, was he, did he resign?
Yes, he's on there.
Didn't pre-ship.
And the pre-iss, okay. So, all right, moving on to 3.6.2. We have a resignation from Paul G. Smith as a member of the American Flag Committee effective May 13th, 2022. So I think we need to look at that committee then for a reappointment for that. I know that last year, we had a lot of people put in volunteer response forms for American Flag Committee, and we couldn't seat them all, so maybe we need to honor some of those. We also have a resignation from Cynthia Donovan Schuster from the Townsend 300th Anniversary Committee effective May 18th. And also a resignation for Linda Johansson as a member of the Townsend 300th Anniversary Committee effective May 20th, 2022. So thank you to both of them for being willing to serve on that. I think that the appointments are like 20-year appointments until the 300th anniversary, so.
Once you get on, you can't get off.
Once you get on, you can't get off, that's right. And we also have a resignation from Jennifer Eaton as a member of the Townsend Conservation Commission, and that was effective in her letter, I guess, April 27th, but this is when we will post.
This is formalized.
This is when it was formalized.
I just want to say thank you, Jennifer, for everything that you've done, and she also filled in in a very difficult time for us, and I want to thank her for everything she's done.
But thank you, Jennifer. And I think we have a discussion of the posting further down. All right, so moving on to Section 4, the meeting business. 4.1, to discuss our labor council. I guess it's mostly to say that they will be appointing a labor council for this year, correct? Has that happened already?
No, so we had a conversation with, Ross and I, this afternoon, had a conversation with Adam.
Okay.
And we're looking for some direction from the board. I know that Adam had had a conversation with the chair previously regarding seeing if there were some options within MTC to move to a different labor council. There are two options. He, Adam suggested that one particular, very experienced, 35 years experience, labor council might be someone that we should interview as a board, the board should interview, to make sure that that person kind of fits with the board's thoughts. And I guess there is, we're just looking for some directions how the board would like to move forward. We could have Adam at a meeting to discuss this, or we could just have Adam and the proposed new labor council at a meeting, so we could interview that person, the board, I mean, could interview. So we could interview that person, the board, I mean, could interview that person.
I do agree with that. Do we do that in an open meeting?
You could do that in an open meeting, yes. I mean, this is not a, this is just a movement from one attorney at a firm to another attorney at a firm. So it's not a. There's no formal appointment that would happen as a part of this process because we would still be over through MTC.
So they don't just assign someone to us?
Correct. It would be at the board's discretion as well. They wanted, you wanted to go with the person they suggested, that Adam had suggested. Or we could, if that interview does not go well and the board does not think there's a fit, we could then see Adam was willing to offer the names of some labor council that they've had interaction with that he believes are good attorneys and he would recommend us, that would not be MTC attorneys.
All right, so we should set up an interview then?
I think a good suggestion would be to set up an interview.
Teresa, second with you, too?
Yes, that's okay. Yes.
Okay, so I'll call Adam. If it's okay with the board, I can call Adam and see when would be the earliest time that we can need to have an interview with the proposed new attorney at MTC that would be handling our legal.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to 4.2. We have this here. I received the message from Lucy at NRWA. It's in the SharePoint. I don't know if you all got a chance to look at it. This is from Lucy Wallace. Every town that is in the Wild and Scenic District for the Nissetisit, Nashua, and Squanah Hook, I didn't say that in order. Rivers assigns a person and then two people, a representative and an alternate to the stewardship committee. The stewardship committee looks at how grants are funded, you know, the grants that we've applied for and received. That's the town and other things of that nature having to do with the stewardship for the Wild and Scenic group. So right now Townsend has two appointees. John Wachowitz is the representative and Bill Wilkinson was assigned, this was in 2019, as the alternate. And they are looking for a new alternate member. So what I thought we could do is post for that. We could work up a posting and see, as opposed to just picking someone, see who responds to the posting and go from there to.
I would do that. I'm okay with that.
Okay, how about you, Teresa? Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, that sounds fine.
Okay, so we'll work on a posting for that and get that posted. I would say, how many weeks should we put the posting up for?
Usually for 10 days, isn't it?
10 days.
Two weeks, 10 days.
Okay.
And is this a voluntary position?
Oh, of course.
Are you volunteering?
I just wanted to, so would we also, as part of any of those postings, of that voluntary form that we use, is that required?
Yes, you would put in a volunteer response form.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be part of the posting. All right. Moving on to 4.3. There were two descriptions for the water department that we had looked at. I haven't skipped any of them yet. But we had looked at at the last meeting. So I guess, Eric, I'm gonna, we had asked you to meet with Dave about them. So do you want to talk about these in my hand in seven years?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to try and describe my understanding of how the the various processes that are going on with the water department and their, and the projects that are going on and how the two new positions fit into the operation schedule and why the water department has requested them to go forward as quickly as they are requesting. So the existing layout of the water department has Dave as a supervisor. There is an office manager and accounts manager on one side of the operation that work in the office. And then there is a foreman and two service techs that work on the technical side of the office. Both the office manager and the accounts manager have water operator duties in addition to their office duties. So they, in addition to the, to the office duties they do for the water department, they also occasionally work for the foreman doing water operator duties. So that's the current setup of the department. The, that setup encompasses the five wells in town, the two tanks, the booster station, and covers the offices and approximately 53 miles of main and 2,100 separate services. So that's the existing conditions. How the existing issues are going to change over the next couple of years is as follows. And I'll start with the, with the not the staffing, but the kind of the operation. In addition to the wells, the tanks, the booster, the office, there will be over the next couple of years, another additional five, approximately five miles of main and 100 to 200 extra services that will be a part of the water department. More importantly, because of the movement of the well at Main, on Main Street, they'll be dividing that, the wells come with a small treatment plant at each well. There's a small treatment portion of the well operation. The well at Main Street, that is separate. There will be a well which is further away from the, from the existing location. And the existing location of the well will be turned into a larger capacity ancillary water treatment plant. It's going to back quadruple in water treatment capacity from the existing operation at that location. In addition, as we saw at the town meeting, there's going to be a main water treatment plant that's going to be constructed starting in the summer of 2022 and completing either the fall of '23 or spring of '24. So the drive for the new positions comes from not just the creation of the new main water treatment plant, but also the separation of the well from the treatment portion of the Main Street well creates in the states, in the kind of the state's definitions, a separate water treatment. When there's a water treatment plant that's separate from a well, there's a requirement from the state that a water treatment plant operator be assigned with the appropriate licenses to that water treatment plant. So starting in June of 2022, the, the town will have a water treatment plant. It will be the small ancillary water treatment plant as part of the Main Street well project.
According to state regs, it needs an operator.
There needs to be an operator, you need to assign an operator to that treatment plant. Because it's no longer a part of the well operations. So there are two new positions being proposed. One of them is a replacement. Currently, there is a foreman on staff. One of the new positions is a distribution foreman. The old foreman position will go away. The new distribution foreman position will be implemented with no pay change, just a slightly upgraded job duties to reflect the kind of new reality of having a divided system that has a water treatment.
With the new additional duties?
With some, with some altered duties, yes, but no, no change in, in pay for that position. Because that has no, because there's no monetary impact of that, the request to have that change made as soon as possible seems to be reasonable. The chief, the new position, entirely new position that's being created and not replacing another position is a chief water plant operator. That's the, the new position that is being requested right now. And that position is needed because, for two reasons. Number one, because of the ancillary water treatment plant that's coming along in June of '22. And number two, because of the main water treatment plant that is beginning construction in summer of '22 and going to fall '23 or spring of '24. And the board had what I thought was reasonable questions about you're creating new positions, but you're not adding new bodies. And how is that going to work if there's really new job duties that have to happen? And I think those are reasonable questions that I asked Dave about. So the, the long-term plan includes another new position being proposed when the treatment, closer to the treatment plant coming in operation called a treatment plant operator, which will report directly to the chief water treatment plant operator. And the long-term plan is to have two extra bodies as a part of the water treatment plant operation, which is.
It's two extra bodies altogether?
Two, so it would be the chief operator and an operator, not the two additional operators. So it'll be the chief one?
I only said one.
No, then you just said two additional.
No, I think you answered.
A total of two additional bodies, the chief water treatment plant operator and a water treatment.
Okay.
So, so where, where now there is Dave supervising an office manager and accounts manager, a foreman and two service techs, we'll have that same structure, but there'll be another chief water treatment plant operator and a water treatment plant operator. So by the end of the process, there'll be two extra people on staff at the water department.
Right, and the distribution foreman is just a re.
It's kind of a renaming of the foreman with a tweaked job duties.
That makes sense to me.
So there is an understanding that as the chief water treatment plant operator gets hired, he will, that person will end up taking on some, some duties as a part of their job in addition to all the duties that exist in the water utility now. Mainly the overseeing of the ancillary H2A treatment plant and the overseeing the construction of the new main treatment plant. And so there's the, that means there are new people that need to come on board, the team, in order to cover this, these job duties. So there are, there are three ways that the water utility is going to, has it in place to cover those additional job duties. Number one, there's funding to hire a part-time service tech. That person would come on at some point in time when the water treatment plant operator exists. And as the water treatment plant operator, who obviously is going to be working on the distribution as well, but as their time starts to be moving more towards the water treatment plant operation, the part-time service tech will be picking up the slack, have the ability to pick up the slack on the service time. On the, on the distribution portion of the.
What's the timeline on that part-time service?
Well, I, I think it's in the budget now, but that, when that gets hired, it's still up in the air. There's a.
A lot of that depends on how the construction goes with, if there are any delays. We're trying to time this out so we don't impact the budget as minimally as possible. But we're trying to, trying to time things out or going out, given the shortfalls in equipment, supplies, chemicals, and everything else, we left it open. We'll adjust as it goes along.
I'll let you finish.
Sure. No, 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 yeah, I just want to, I'm almost done. So I'm sorry, I know. So we know we need to have two new full-time employees by the end of this process. The budgeting for those two new full-time employees is one in the spring of 2023 and one in the FY '24 budget. So whether those new employees are first a new full-time service tech or first a new treatment plant operator depends on the needs of the utility at the time. I talked to Dave. We anticipate, you know, if the board approves these positions in trying to post for the positions relatively soon, the distribution foreman and the chief water treatment plant operator, with the anticipation that there are internal candidates who are likely to post for these jobs. And so the new bodies that come on board will in all likelihood be a service tech and a water treatment plant operator or two service techs, depending on how the, kind of the entry level positions work. And the, the most likely, you know, course of action is that a more experienced person would be applying for the chief water treatment plant operator and distribution foreman positions that have come open.
Okay, so construction is beginning this summer?
The vessels have to be audited in some construction this summer. September, the water main is going out to bed. And there's a number of reasons for that, which is for, two is going up in PFAS. By doing the water main now, we can do what's called blending.
Is that the extra five miles of water main that?
Yes.
And so what? So you're not using Witches Brook anymore and that water system, you're putting new pipes in?
Which, which is for, the main is going from Ash Street to Hydrotrace. Both wells get, if the.
It doesn't do that now?
No. Not, not.
It ran into the system, ran out of the wells.
Right.
Direct. The whole point is to bring up Witches Brook one and two down to the new treatment plant.
To be treated.
To be treated, all three together. But we also can blend them right now.
Which is, which is for two booths over 20. We can run Witches Brook one and two at the same time. And it's called blending because it has miles to mix.
So the five, where are the five miles of new?
The other one would be South Row, Hubbard, South Hubbard Road to South Row to Emery Street.
So it's pulling all the, it's all in the Witches Brook, so to pull that all down to Hydrotrace in order to treat and blend.
The reason why we're ordering the vessels now and probably doing the pad for the vessels is there is a 52 to 56 week wait time for delivery right now.
So do we know exactly where this treatment plant is going?
They have started citing it now.
Yes.
Because I haven't seen anything on it.
We're going to at least get the vessels, but it needs, the engineers have been drawing it up. I know they did perk tests for septic system down there outside of Zone 1. And I expect it to, to come before planning and construction as soon as possible.
We did give the site plan to all the residents at the time meeting. Then if you want, I'll send it to.
The Board of Health, to my understanding, has already been down there, too.
Yeah, they were down there for the purpose.
Right, so they're, they're actively doing their, doing their thing down there.
So these have been approved by the union?
The one which in these has been approved by the union, correct? We worked real hard on it.
Yep, I, I agree and, and thank you for your determination. But I would, I would like to make a motion to approve the distribution foreman and the chief water treatment plant operator job descriptions as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote then?
Teresa A. Morse, yes?
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, moving on to 4.4. This is the vacation buyout request for the water department. This is another one that we asked for more information.
I, I was just going to very briefly say, the board had asked me to reach out to the union, ask for some more, I think, hopefully more binding language to make the board more comfortable that the union would not attempt to use this kind of in the future or looking back to, to, to request that some other members of the union be, be awarded vacation time or buyouts.
And Madam Chair, I would, I would be, I can read this into the record with your permission.
Should we have our motion first? Or do you want to read it into the record? Go ahead, read it into the records. Then we'll call.
Letter dated May 25th, 2022 to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Townsend, to the Honorable Board of Selectmen, the union recognizes that in light of the pandemic and the staffing shortages it has caused as well as timeliness involved with the PFAS remediation from the Townsend drinking water supply, that one David Vigent has been unable to use his earned vacation time. The union is allowing a 120-hour payout of the earned vacation time as a one-time event to this single employee. The union agrees that this will not constitute a past practice and/or precedent, shall not grieve any other Ask Me employee who was unable to roll over any and/or buy back vacation time during the COVID pandemic, shall not use this one-time event in the future and agrees that it shall not support any further vacation payout requests for Ask Me members during, or resulting from the COVID pandemic. Please contact me should you have any questions or concerns. Bobby Jones, Ask Me Council 93.
So do we want a motion or do you want me to just state my opinion? This letter is much better, and I'm stating right there. This is much better than the letter that we saw before. My, my problem with this is that we, the town, do not have the budget to buy back people's vacation and to pay out vacation time that wasn't taken. We just don't have the money. The water department operates with a separate fund and therefore they do. So I just have, this is my own thing, I just have a, a problem supporting something that isn't available to all the employees. That's all. It, it hasn't, and there was no request by the town for you not to take vacation. In other words, no one said, please don't take vacation. So, or was a vacation request denied, not by the town? I don't know whether the Board of Water Commissioners denied a request for vacation. So that's the issue that I have with the request. So go ahead.
All right, so I guess I understand your point. I strongly disagree with it because we do have a separate fund. And also?
I stated that.
No, I understand. Let me finish, please. Having been involved regionally in water, this has been unprecedented, both PFAS and pandemic. We have had to make allowances for that in the water industry. In part additionally, that's why we have a separate, why we have an enterprise budget. So matter of the budget status of the town, the water department can operate as it needs to. The town relies, everything in this town that's on municipal water relies on it. You're talking industry, you're talking schools, you're talking fire. It's a different level. Our board really thought this through. We talked about it at length on multiple meetings. You had something that was unprecedented in terms of both the pandemic and having PFAS in the water and what that requires. Having been involved in it myself, I don't think you fully realize the time committed that involves. And with that small of a staff and losing staff members, we can't not show up. If an operator goes down, all right, you still have to have a licensed operator onsite. If you don't, you shut the, the DP comes in to adjust the system down. So it's a total different level of responsibility. So I, I, I understand what you say about not being off, being able to offer to the other town employees. But again, that's why there's a water enterprise account. We're not supposed to act like the rest of the town because we have additional responsibilities that apply to both his license, the ethics that go along with his license, and the responsibility of the community. And I got to say, Dave has put in a lot of hours above and beyond, a lot of stuff we've done, everything in-house that we could, from the rehab of the Highland Storage Tank, bringing it up out of the vault and into a building. A lot of the work on Main Street was done in-house, as much as could be, bringing Cross Street back online. We've had to jump through hurdles trying to fix the Highland, uh, Island Street issue. So I, our department, the department itself has taken a lot of shots to the chin, have done exceptional work under really trying circumstances. And as being the person involved, I, you know, nobody's experienced a pandemic like this before. And so I, I, you know, when you lose your staff at one point or another, the entire staff at some point, one point, he had to be the operator on duty. We never deny a request. And he understands that this will never happen again. This was a one-off. But I, it's something our board took into consideration. We actually understood the impact it could have with the rest of the union. It's why we first requested the letter from Bobby Jones. And it was something that was contingent on that letter. We understood that. So I'll leave it there and I ask for the board's support.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is absolutely no question in regards to, to Dave's work. He has really gone above and beyond. I also, being part of the many water meetings over the past year, I can honestly say that any conversation in regards to any issue that has affected the town water has been dealt with in the utmost of, not only the professional, professionalism, but more importantly, the, the rapid response and the ability to get it done really kind of rests on Dave's shoulders to get it done. I agree that it, it, this, my concern was, was, was shared in regards to the, the other employees in the town, but I, I do feel that we've made them whole in regards to rolling over. There are some things that we've done with other employees. And my concern to the water department and the water commissioners meeting was that we needed to work with the union to make sure that we were not setting a precedence that the town was going to get themselves into financial difficulty. Having said that, I feel that I, I personally am going to support the, the water commissioners for this, knowing that this is a one-time thing and it's not to happen again.
Anything further to be said?
I just wanted to mention that it appeared as though we've lost Teresa. She, she was on and then dropped, and then it looked like she came back on and just dropped again. So I just wanted to know that we've lost her.
So should we wait for her to come back for a vote? Or?
If you'd like, I can go and try to give her a call if that would?
Well, we have a motion, do we have a motion on four?
She's, she's, she's coming back on.
Okay.
I don't know, she's heard the conversation, but?
Just saying, oh, I'm in my 60s, I didn't ever want this to happen again. I'm tired.
You sound unanimous in that. I hear you.
So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the, the approval of 120-hour payout for David Vigent from the water department.
And I will second that?
Just dropped again.
Yeah. So I guess at this point, let's do a roll call vote?
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes?
Veronica Kelly, yes? And Teresa? With that, the motion passes, so.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
You want?
There will not happen.
Unless we have another unprecedented?
No, we had enough.
Jokes about that. Monkeypox is still out there.
That's right. So it's not going to be a pandemic.
It's not.
All right, so moving on to 4.5, the reserve fund transfer.
One quick fact before, before we leave, it's like, thank you for your support. I really do appreciate it.
And I appreciate the explanation.
We'll have good luck.
Thank you.
Reserve fund transfers. So somehow, these are kind of like opposite.
Describe what you mean by opposite, because I was a little confused.
Okay, so the 2,000 insurance one, when you click it and share it?
Yeah.
It comes up with the 2,500 facilities who pay.
Yes. Okay. It wasn't just me.
And then, no, it wasn't just you. And then if you go to the next one, which says, anyway, that one is the, no, there's
So if there's an error there, it's 1,000% my fault. I, I thought I had uploaded them and named them correctly, but?
They're kind of opposite, that's all. But I figured it out because it's easy to do that. Okay.
Yeah, my concern was they're okay on the sheet itself. It's just a file name that was different.
And that's my, it's not, it doesn't exist anywhere except for in my transfer of that file to there, I think.
Sabrina, can you work that out?
I, I will put that on Sabrina going forward because she's obviously better at it.
Anyway, so there are two reserve fund transfers. One here to take care of the knob and tube wiring before we get, before we can do the insulating, et cetera, that the Green Communities grant.
I had no idea we still had that.
I don't think they did either.
I don't think anybody knew that.
Yeah.
So, so that's $2,500.
We already have that change order, so we're ready to go as soon as we get them.
And I'm sorry, guys, I dropped out for a minute, but I'm back.
Okay, well, Teresa, we should tell you that we did vote to allow the, the buyout, vacation buyout request. So Chaz and I both voted yes, so we figured?
Okay, if you want to add my ear, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So your vote is?
I heard most difficult question. I just got right around the vote and I'm like, I'm kicked off.
Okay, all right. Did you want to enter a vote or are you okay with the?
Yes, I want to vote and enter a vote if you is.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're on the reserve fund transfer. So we're looking at the knob and tube wiring one first, the one for the West Townsend Reading Room. So this is in order for the Green Communities weatherization we completed. So the grant pays for the weatherization, but it does not cover the unknown knob and tube wiring fix. So is there a motion to?
Do you want me to do this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm in the car, I'm, I'm, I'm almost there.
All right.
Until I get there.
This is the reserve fund transfer?
Yeah.
I thought that was solely the?
The Finance Committee, yeah, I'm looking at this. It looks like it's already been?
Selectors, they are doing the line-to-line transfer. It's joint, actually, it's a two-board.
So we don't have?
We don't even have to do this.
We don't have to do this and?
I don't think that, yeah, so it was, it was unclear whether or not this needed a, a Board of Selectmen approval or not.
So let's just vote on it anyway.
This is a notification. I know, I think the answer is no. You don't need an approval, it goes directly to the FinCom and they can approve it. Hopefully they'll approve it on Thursday, I believe.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
If not, we'll have to find another way because I think it's important.
I think it's important.
So, and then the other one is for the insurance change. All right, so we'll just hand those over to the Finance.
Going forward, I will, if there's a, for it, I'll just keep it in the TA's portion of the?
Yes, yeah, that sounds good. Okay. All right, so while we're on the West Townsend Reading Room, all right, so the, there is a committee that is to handle West Townsend Reading, and it had been, been done by the administrative assistants because there was no committee in place, really. I think there's one person listed, but I don't know how active they are. But there, the committee is responsible for maintaining the calendar views for the West Townsend Reading Room, collecting the fees and distributing, then collecting the keys to the facility. And so it's a three-person committee, and I, I think I, I wrote the posting by copying what had been posted, and I should say May 2022 instead of actually at this point, June 2022. And the appointment is until June 30th, 2023. So for three individuals who would be interested in volunteering to help to keep tabs on the West Townsend Reading. So this is the posting, and what I was looking for was a vote to post this and, and then, you know, turning in the volunteer response form. You know, anybody that's interested for appointments. Right now, I think the town clerk is doing that.
I, I don't, I don't know that we need to vote for a posting unless you're changing a posting.
We are changing the posting from a year ago to now.
Exactly. So you know, the date's probably something we could just do.
Right. And repost.
Yeah.
All right, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Teresa, are you good with that? We won't do a foreman vote.
I am okay with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll just get that posting up there and go from there. All right, we also need a posting for the conservation, new conservation commission member, the opening that came about because of Jennifer Eaton's resignation. So that also needs to be posted. So are we all good with that? And that's a 10-day?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, they posting?
I think we are posting.
We are posting. All right.
So we'll get that posting up there. All right, the next one is the road opening permit. I think we need a vote for this and signatures, so we should, something here. This is for a road opening at Main Street at New Fitchburg Road for insulators or something?
Install insulator.
Install an insulator. So is there a motion for, to approve the road opening permit to install an insulator at Main Street at New Fitchburg Road?
So moved.
So moved.
I will consider that a motion and a second. All right, roll call votes.
Teresa A. Morris, yes?
Sexton Rainey, yes?
And Veronica Kelly, yes? All right, and this, this needs to be signed, so I'm just going to sign it and pass it to you, Chaz, and Teresa, when you get here, you can sign as well.
Okay.
And today's date is 5/31. All right, moving on to the food truck. I did bring the food truck business, we have a mandatory referral. We did fill it out once and send it back. This is the second, it is for the hearing on June 13th, and Beth asked that we get referrals back to them by June 10th. So if we want to wait and discuss at next week's meeting, we could, but it's up to But it's up to what you, Chaz and Teresa, would like to do. The full plans are in the office. I think we have scaled down plans in the packets.
Can you confirm we're meeting next week as well?
We are. Our next meeting is June 7th, yes, at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
And then we're doing first and third, first and third.
That I had on my calendar, but that's alright. I missed it.
I was just trying to.
I'm okay with. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with discussing tonight, but.
I am too, are you, Chaz? Alright, so as far as, so I'll, I'm just gonna read the referral notice. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A and Townsend zoning bylaws, Section 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section 145-65 Special Permits, the Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, March 14th, 2022, at 6:45 PM, continued to 4/11/2022 and to 6/13/2022 at 6:45 PM. The Planning Board will review an application received from Anthony Sabatino, ASC Enterprises Incorporated, regarding a change in use proposal to redesign the property at 32 Main Street, accessory snap 33 block 60 lot zero, zone OCD outlining commercial district, to open and operate a food truck park providing food services accompanied by mobile food trucks for takeout and sit-down picnic-style park. The project, for the project description, well, I guess that's it, is what I just read. And the plans are on file with the Planning Board, so if anybody's interested in seeing the plans, you can stop by the Planning Office when they're open, Monday through Friday. I think they close at noon on Friday.
Oh, I think.
I think.
I do think they're open into the afternoon.
Yeah, 9 to 4, if, if anybody from the public would like to see the plans. So there is a set of reduced plans in our packet, and it looks like there are eight food trucks, if I have that right. A building that will hold bathrooms, and that the, the house upstairs will be removed to make, you know, make room for the food trucks. And they will have hookups for each of the eight possible food trucks. So pretty much, it's the food trucks in the middle, the parking kind of behind. I think there's 80 parking spots. And then there are 20 picnic tables off to the side where people could sit. So what we're being asked for is any comments that we have on it. I guess that's really it. I, I guess my comments would be, and it's something that we had talked about before, is are, you know, a, a regular restaurant pays taxes to the town? Do, are these subject to the same requirements that a restaurant is subject? I, I don't know.
That's my major concern, is that. Well, I have two concerns. I have that concern as well, in regards to the, the taxes in regards to that. Is there a sales and use tax, or how does that work?
So typically speaking, if I may.
Yes, yes.
Food trucks are subject to the same sanitary code requirements as sit-down restaurants. They have them, they have the same requirement for inspections as a sit-down restaurant does.
Safe and all of that stuff.
The, the, the major difference you're gonna find from a food truck to a, to a sit-down restaurant is that, is in the, the real estate property and personal property taxes, which is to say, the real estate taxes for this parcel will not take, you know, cut those food trucks. Those are not fixtures on the property. They may leave. And so the taxes that the town will receive will be based on the fixtures that are there. So it doesn't include the food trucks, it includes the building, and whatever hookups that are there. There might be some property taxes as a part of the, the equipment hookups that are there, but that's the major difference. They would be required to pay, if the town has a separate restaurant tax, they would be required to pay that as well for sales in town.
They have a meal tax.
They have a meals tax, yeah, so, so that's, that would be required to be paid by them as well. But it's a, it's the, it's the property taxes and the personal property taxes that would be.
It's the money for the town. My second major concern is the, the amount of parking. I think that's an exorbitant for, for that. I think it opens up, it's very close to the rail trail. I don't know what their plans are for security in regards to that. When the parking, is it gonna be, you know, closed at a certain time at night? It'd have some major concerns in regards to that. I mean, I think it's a great idea, I really do. I'm not sure that that is the venue for that, but that's not in my purview. But my two things are the taxes for the town and the parking. I think it's excessive.
Alright, Teresa.
Yeah, I have one. Yeah, I do have one concern. I know that often, most, most often, the food truck, food preparation isn't done on the site, and I didn't see anything. I just kind of scanned everything quickly. But do we know where the food preparation, I mean, is being done, and that they have all the proper, you know, allergy, gluten, all those type of things, inspections that are required by Board of Health? Not that the food trucks themselves are inspected, I know that was covered, but where they are preparing the food. And I didn't see any mention of that, so I do have a concern about that.
That, that would be covered by the Board of Health wherever that location exists. So if someone, I'm just gonna pick Pepperell, if their food truck, if their home base of the food truck was in Pepperell, then they would, and they did cooking out of a commercial kitchen in Pepperell, Pepperell would be responsible for those inspections, and for the food truck inspection. And so we would typically.
Right, and I saw the food truck inspections mentioned, but I didn't see that they have to have a license to, you know, wherever they're preparing the food and inspections.
Most of the food trucks. Most of the food trucks that I'm familiar with do cooking on-site. They, they do, do it in the food truck, especially if it's hot, hot food. It's usually done in the food truck.
Yeah, they cook it on-site, but they prepare it. Like, they'll make hamburgers, pre-make them in their commissal kitchen, put them in their freezers, and they cook them on-site.
Wherever that actually occurs, to my knowledge, Teresa, is that that would have to be listed and follow the same guidelines as a catering kitchen, or, and it would be respective to what town or what location that, that particular kitchen is in.
Okay, so what do we want on the referral?
You may want to specify that the trucks are in fact mobile, they're removed daily, weekly, monthly, and season. I've seen mobile trucks that.
They're like mobile?
Yeah, they're mobile.
Yeah, we have to.
And, I mean, everybody envisions them as, at the end of the day, they leave that spot, they go back to the factory. Maybe that's weekly. I think you may want to have them put in something that says, mobile food trucks need to be mobile. Moving monthly might be sufficient, but.
Or maybe not sit overnight. I mean, that's, it's, whatever you guys think is the appropriate thing.
I mean, if they're gonna be there every day, moving at night may be burdensome. It's a monthly action.
Would that be something under the purview of the Planning Board to, to discuss with them? You know, because I have full, I have full faith in the Planning Board will, will be talking about those kinds of things.
Probably, it's probably a separate bylaw that controls mobile, mobile foods.
Right.
I don't think we have a bylaw.
No.
I mean, they could maybe, is this, is this gonna be a special permit?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, no, I think it's just site plan.
Or a change of use.
I don't, yeah, I think it's a change of use and a, and a site plan review.
Site plan review, special permit, and special permit.
Yeah, okay.
If it's a special permit, they might be able to put that in as a requirement, but they've got to show mobility.
Yeah, it's a reasonable requirement that they demonstrate mobility.
Um, so.
You must demonstrate mobility.
Drive that thing around the parking lot, let me see it.
Yes, and I had town administration head to head and witnessed the moving of the mobile food vehicle. One time, we did it once a year. They would unhook, and they would hook up, and they would drag it around the parking lot, and back it in, and. It's small.
Just to demonstrate.
Okay.
It, it also had to have a license, so it had to have a license plate.
And registration.
And we called the police down, said, please verify that this is a valid registration, that they would run the plate. Town gets excise tax. It's registered. If it's not registered, you miss that.
The reality is, you're, you're, you're talking about one commercial parcel that they're doing this, not an amalgam of commercial parcels or a large space between one, that's one commercial parcel to do it, so. As you say, whenever there's food trucks involved, you're weighing the potential loss of, of tax revenue with the potential increase in traffic that you might get because it's there, and the increase in, in kind of missed taxes.
And I am 100% for businesses, 100% for businesses. However, thi- this does not fit into what I would consider a business or a revenue generator for, for the town. That's, that's my concern.
My experience with food trucks is it's something that happens on a weekend, or it's something that happens at lunchtime. Not that it's something that is kind of permanent.
Right.
So that's new. And it is a, a, a loss of real estate tax, but there are other things that could have that happen too.
It's a vacant lot, other than the houses, it's not a lot of real estate. I just got to know, the Board of Health is actually looking at food permits for mobile vehicles.
Good, okay, good.
And that kind of, as a general aside on this, the Land Use Department has informed me that they've gotten several inquiries about real estate adjacent to the rail trail, because they believe it's gonna be a draw, and so the people on the rail trail will see this and.
And this depends on, on what the hours of operations are and all that kind of stuff. I agree with that. I agree with that. Again, I'm concerned about when they're not operating. When those trucks are not selling food, what's gonna happen to that, that spot? That's where I have a concern.
Um, so how do you wanna board that? The Board of Selectmen would like the Planning Board to consider the 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 use of the parcel when it, during off-hours.
Yeah, our concern. And, and just to throw it out there too, let's say everything goes through and they get this, this passed, and they get their special permit. Then they decide on a Saturday or a Sunday to have a flea market on one part of the parking lot in trucks there to give food. Is that acceptable use? Because it would be commercial use, and they could use that to whatever they wanted to do, correct?
I'd have to look at the, I mean, that's a question for the, the Land Use Department as to whether or not that use would fall under something that's allowed in the OCD.
In the US.
But yes, a lot, I mean, lots of commercials.
Do you see where I'm going?
No, I, yeah, like, a special permit could, I think, as Ross said, have some limitations on, if the, if the Planning Board puts them, have some limitations on hours of operation, or use of the parcel for non-food truck uses or things like that.
Well, they could use it for a food truck, but I'm saying that they could create a whole different.
Whole little industry.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it would be kind of tax-free.
Yeah.
The mobility of the food truck. Okay, I'm gonna read this since I have it done. Board of Selectmen would like the Planning Board to consider the security and use of the parcel during food truck off-hours. The mobility of the food trucks and currents ensure that they are, are not permanent fixtures on the site. And I wanted to say something about the size of the parking area. And the need for 80 parking spots for, is it eight food trucks?
Yes, in spots for trucks.
Which seems extraordinary. Anything else that we should add?
Yes.
That I'm gonna sign up for the board?
We're on the food, food, the food sanitation engineer at the shoulder, it's looking into permits for trucks.
Good. Thank you, Board of Health.
Alright, unless anybody, I'm gonna, we have this, should I just put it in the sign here folder? Oh, what happened to the other? Oh. Alright, so that takes care of the food truck. Next one is first reading of the updated vehicle use policy. So can we talk about this before we do the first reading? Yes. I have questions. I, I do too. So are you ready, Chaz?
Yep.
My first one is, has Adam reviewed it? Because I would like him to review it before we do a first reading.
Okay.
My second one is, Ross had put together a list of how you check out the truck of the town vehicle.
Yep.
Where is that in here?
That's what I, I don't have that. Do you have that?
Okay, so that needs to be.
When you read, you read that part at the first reading, and then you took some edits to it. I don't, I don't have the edits. I have the, the. I don't, I don't have the edits, I have the, the proposal for use of the town hall vehicle.
Just the vehicle, yeah. See, that's where I was confused because the there's an existing vehicle use policy.
Yes.
And what, what we talked about last time was just for the, the new vehicle.
Right, and I don't see that in here either.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, say more, um, so I wanted the, um, what I thought was gonna happen is that so this is like a whole reworked vehicle use policy.
Yes.
But it does not include the use of the town hall vehicle.
Yes.
And I, I think.
We just need to add it.
The town hall vehicle needs to be addressed in here.
Yes, and it needs to be added.
Okay.
And I couldn't talk about it until we had it on the agenda.
Okay, so now we're talking.
Now we're talking about it.
Okay, so my comments were Adam review, question, then it was what about the sign out of the town hall vehicle?
Right.
How that works, that's not in here. I would, because you say everybody's gonna sign it, I would add a confirmation of receipt and a date so that they get this policy or a separate page that they hand back, there needs to be a little bit more added for that.
So what, what we had before with just that one with the new vehicle use. Did you want me to add it to?
The town hall vehicle use, you mean?
Yes.
I saw it, okay, so I was on page six of nine.
Yep.
And I would have put it in here somewhere.
Under the governance?
Governance of municipal vehicle use policy.
Okay.
Or add a, you know, nowhere in here could I find that there was a town hall vehicle.
Correct, and that's what I wanted to add to it. My concern was that the existing policy was not comprehensive enough.
Okay.
To cover all of the uses.
All right.
And you had supplied in our original conversation on several.
I did.
Several towns.
Yes.
And I looked at all the several towns that had it in there and compared it to our vehicle use policy, and there's a lot in there that we really should have.
I, I like this, what is missing is the use of the town hall vehicle.
And I will add that, I just, if you want me to put it under governance, I can put it under that.
Or you can add a separate, and somewhere there should be a reference that we have a town hall vehicle that can be used as opposed to a personal vehicle, and that is preferable, that people use the town hall vehicle.
Yes.
So that needs to be added.
So, under categories of, categories of municipal use, that's where I was gonna add the fact that we have a vehicle, a town vehicle. And then I could put the provisions in the governance.
Okay, so.
And then if you wanna do that, then we can schedule that for a new reading.
We would need a new reading, so Ross, you'll get whatever you had written, I, I don't have that.
I don't have that either, I couldn't find it.
You do, actually, it arrived about 1.5 seconds ago. When I sent it to you.
You, you have it, Jack. Okay, so how about if you put that, you weave that in?
Yep.
And then we'll, um, put this on not for the 7th, but for the 21st.
Yes.
Is that okay?
That's good, that'll give me some time to.
All right.
Made a few marks on this, some typos and some other stuff.
None typos.
I, I, I hope I didn't say that too loud.
And so Eric, we could, if you will review it after Chaz gets it done, if you wanna review it, we might be able to bypass the Adam review, or should we have the Adam review?
I, I, I think I could review it.
Okay, all right, if you could.
So then, show me real quick what you added for the signatory in the back.
Can I just give you this?
Three copies.
And, and it can be a separate page because really you want people to be able to key that. So, and then just hand back the last page or something.
Like we did with the, um, the asset allocation for the laptops and stuff?
Yes.
That can be done.
So Teresa, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're, you're just jumping in because you weren't here when we arrived.
Yeah, but just a, just, I, I guess this is the way it's, it's, it's always been done, but with the, you know, diesel up to almost $7 an hour, we're doing portal to portal. I mean, how many vehicles do we have that people are taking home and bringing back and how far they are, I'm just curious.
There are some that are contractual with fire and police.
Eric told me.
I think that, um, Highway has one that goes home.
Because there's no events and emergencies.
I, I think he has a superintendent's vehicle, I'm pretty sure, that goes home.
Water has one.
Water, yeah. And then the old water department vehicle is the one that was pulled in here, and it's now the town hall vehicle. So that people could use that rather than their personal vehicle, and in the budget, we reduced all the mileage because of the town hall vehicle, the gas will go, you know, and it'll be the town hall vehicle that gets used most of the time, I mean, if you're running to the dump, you should be able to grab that vehicle, if it's available, then it just needs to be assigned. Or, or if you're going on a sidewalk, you could take the town hall vehicle instead of putting in the line.
Where is it located?
It's supposed to be either in the parking lot or in the garage.
Um, and it was purchased, I think, with green communities.
Green communities.
Grant funding, way back, you know, several years ago.
So, since it's come back here, it's been serviced, we replaced the tires.
Wow.
Inspected, it's been detailed and cleaned up.
And it's ready as well.
It's a, it's a hybrid, so it should be very good gas mileage.
Right, and I think the filling of the gas is a highway department, correct?
It's intended that way because it takes care of reimbursement.
Revenues for the.
Can be, can sign up ahead of time, they will be given a key flog to be using at the.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, so.
Keys are either in your desk or Janet might have them.
I will get an email telling us where, I'll admit it.
She's here consistently.
That makes sense. To remind folks that it's here.
It might be something in the bottom drawer here.
It's entirely possible. I have not sort of, I've not gone through the keys yet.
A big pile of keys in there, but this one should be obvious.
What kind of hybrid is it?
Ford Fusion.
Okay.
And then the one other question, I, the fire chief did chose not to take a vehicle, correct? So what happens to that vehicle?
I actually know the answer to that is.
Go for it.
It is currently in the West Townsend Firehouse, and they are, um, planning to use it as an additional interceptor vehicle. Yeah, for, well, I, the, the, use it as additional interceptor vehicles, and when they use, the interceptor vehicles are a revenue generator for the fire department because they, they bring in fees for every time they're sitting on, with the BMT, so they're talking about. That's the plan for it, at least temporarily, we don't wanna take it out of service because if we hire a new full-time fire chief, at some point in the future, that person is likely to want to have the fire chief's vehicle.
Um, all right, the next one, are we ready, you know, done with vehicle use? Okay, moving on to 4.11, 4.11, which we added, um, that was the conservation fees. I had one comment on this that I sent to Jessica this afternoon. I thought that under research time of conservation staff, it should be listed as $30 per hour.
And that is correct, it should be, it was typo.
So, uh, so that is in addition to what was here. And we did approve back in February, I think it was, um, conservation commission fees, this is an adjustment to it.
Okay.
To take into consideration other, um, possibilities and the 501(c)(3) charity, um, uses, usages as well.
Yep, I did see their meeting where they discussed it, so.
Any other?
I'm okay with the change of them.
Any other questions?
Just in general, when was the last time we reviewed, like, have we been rotating review of all of our fees?
Well, no, it's been pretty much as a department determines it, I don't think these have been reviewed since 2010. So the, what we were using was old, 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 old. And we really, I thought, needed an update, they chose to do it, nobody said, oh, you need to update the fees. It's pretty much as a department determines.
Right, in the department or the, the, the committee or.
So they don't have to come to us, they can just determine if they should look on their fees.
Well, they have to, it depends on whether we're the appointing authority.
Okay, so can we take a specific example, like I know land use, I got to speak to land use, they wanna look at their fees.
Yes, so they, um.
So explain the process?
If, if it was, say, the planning board decided to change their fees, they are an elected board, so they don't need our approval to change their fees, I know when we were on the planning board, we changed our fee schedule.
Yep.
And we didn't go to the board of selectmen for it, but conservation commit, I think building department changed their fees.
Yep.
Last year. Um, and, uh, again, we are the building department appointing authorities, so it came to us for approval. For town clerk, she changes her fees, but they don't need to come to us, they go to town meeting. So it depends, I think, on the path, so Eric.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that one, one of the things that I do plan to do is ask the departments that fall under the board of selectmen's oversight to review their fee schedule and make sure that it's up to date, that it's not, we will assist them in trying to find comparables and make sure that they bring it up to date, so that's.
And not just up to schedule, make sure, well, the language is correct, because like we ran into, I know we ran into once, that the, the fees on that didn't quite cover what we had and stuff.
Yeah, there was, that we, when we were on the planning board, that's what was happening, is that, I forget what it was, uh, something, the advertising or whatever, something, something.
It wasn't covered.
We, we were being paid, every time that we sent it out, we actually were paying out of our pocket as opposed to, to.
I forgot exactly what, what this was, but they're arguing that because it's not specifically said they own nothing.
That's the conservation commission.
Oh, is it?
Those are the ones that you just.
Yeah, well, there's another one too, I think there's one in land use that's like that too as well, okay, thank you.
So.
So we may be bringing more of these to the board. Sooner rather than later.
I think it's a, a good idea, I mean, they haven't been reviewed, and we didn't ask the conservation commission to review, they just were looking at what they had there and said, these haven't been updated in a very long time, so anyway. So are we good with this, are there any other questions, that was my only one, I, $30, I thought, is that a flat fee, it should be per hour.
Yeah.
So, especially with all the old, uh, certificates of compliance that were never issued and things like that.
Right.
It takes a long time to clean that stuff up, so. Anything else on this that anybody wants to note? So is there a motion to accept the fees brought forward by the conservation commission? So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, Teresa, Amy Morris, yes?
Jess, X, and Rainy, yes.
And Mark. Let the conservation commission know, and I think their fees are published, um, in ECO, Jessica actually asked me this question, and I have never changed that, I think it's the town clerk.
I believe, yes, the clerk has control over ECO, yes.
Okay, so she's the one that they would give this to, to publish it there, they could publish it on their website themselves. But for that, and I think it was in there, so, um, anyway, I think so, I answered the question.
A little bit of parallel to that, Cassin was checking the number of hits to the town's webpage. And they had a high number of hits today, the conservation commission fee structure.
Really?
Just a little trivia for you, a lot of people were searching the webpage today under conservation fee structure.
And it wasn't even on our agenda. Okay, so definitely, it's updated and they need to search again. We should put that as a red alert, the conservation.
I was one because I checked it to see whatever.
It's all of us, everyone in this room.
All right, so do you all have access to SharePoint, because I just put this in, we're moving on to work session, Marco projects. Should I make a copy of this for everybody? It is in SharePoint.
I can do it.
Section five. I wanna talk just a little bit about Marco projects only because, um, we'll do policy at the next meeting, I have enough data to do that, but, um, the, and, and what I have, I have to ask Jennifer Thompson to send me a, a new one, because this is before our last vote, and I haven't gotten the new one since our last vote for projects. So the, uh, fire EMS is not in there, the 300 split act from the Green Bay Road Bridge. Um, so what I wanted to talk about is the fact that we did not, we had applied for shared streets and spaces grant for the sidewalk at the harbor to connect the second piece of the rail trail that has just been completed to the branch of the rail trail that will run behind the food truck place, and we need a sidewalk. You know, something to come out on 119, right now, from the Harbor Church to the traffic light, there is not a sidewalk until you get right to the traffic light itself, where there's maybe two sections, you know, two rectangular pieces of concrete or whatever. So we had applied, um, for that, for, uh, shared streets to have the sidewalk put in, and we did not get the grants. Um, we won last week. So what we had done, however, was in shared streets and spaces, so let me see, um, but, so if you look at ARPA 07, which is in the top section, the way this, uh, is set up, the top section is the projects that have been assigned numbers. The middle section is the like quasi-pieces, and the bottom section, the green, well, it's not green on yours, if it's black and white, the bottom two are being, um, paid for through FEMA until July 1st. This says 430, it should say 630, because FEMA extended. So, if you look at ARPA 07, that was the harbor sidewalk bike trail, and, and that's the thing that we applied for shared streets. We have it already voted as a project.
Correct.
For $50,000. Um, however, we applied for shared streets hoping that we wouldn't have to spend this money. When we applied for shared streets in the second category allocated but on hold, we said we would put 15,000 from that 50 towards engineering. If in fact, we didn't get the grant, or if we did get the grant, then we'd have 15,000 because the shared streets won't cover engineering. Did I explain that well enough?
Yes, you did.
So we needed 15,000, which would then give us back 35, well, we didn't get the grant for the sidewalk. So my thought is that we should start the tip process. So there is a process for that, where you go and you go to the Department of Transportation site and you say, hey, we wanna do this and we want this on the tip, and the tip typically, and you'll, either of you are on MRPC or MJPC, you'll learn that it's typically around January, February timeframe where the tip gets set for the next five years, and it moves, it's a dynamic process. But, uh, you know, some things that are down here get moved up here, some things are up here getting, so it's all how much money is there? Who has their engineering done, blah, blah, blah. Because there is a commitment that the town has to make to pay for engineering. This is all things that I've learned in the past two to three years going for these MJTC meetings. We, the town, don't have anything on the tip and haven't had anything on the tip for a very long time. So it's time for us to get something on the tip. And this is a very small project. Oftentimes, the projects are rotaries or big, big projects. This is really, really tiny, but sometimes there's leftover money that fits tiny projects really well. So I think we should at least explore putting this project on the tip. So that's why I wanted to see. And if we do get it on the tip, spend that fifteen thousand dollars, do a do a flip block, make ARPA oh seven fifteen thou, we can get a an estimate for what the engineering would cost. I think that's about right from when we were doing the shared streets. That's about what we thought it would take, but you know, get a better um estimate of that and use the money for the engineering, because the project does need to be shovel ready. For the tip. And that would make it shovel ready. So that's my thought. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, we can explore that process. Brad Harris had explained it to us, the process for the tip, around the time that we um looked at the the study for the canal streets, you know, home street west, one nineteen um project. Or study, as a case maybe. So what do you guys think?
I think that I'd like to put on the tip too, the in front of the high school as well.
Okay, so want to hear my thought for in front of the high school? That includes one nineteen, the Proctor Road intersection? Okay, so my thought on that is.
Where even, no, I'm talking in front of the, right in front of the school where McDonald's is and all of that.
I consider that a double whammy. The same thing in one pro, I consider it, because what happens at Proctor and one nineteen can change or direct what happens at the high school. So I see it as a shared project. And I would like that to be safe streets for all, the Biden infrastructure plan.
Correct.
I think we should go for a, and we need to talk to MRPC and whatever the name is, Middlesex something or other in Lowell. You probably know.
Yeah.
What? That is a shared project because of the location of the one nineteen intersection. And I think we should apply for the the grant which is open now. Uh, has to be in in the fall, like August, September timeframe.
Do we have to have?
For a study.
Right.
For the not not the, not the, I can't remember which is, there's implementation and there's action. I think action is ready to roll. I think implementation grant is to
Study going.
Get the plans done. And I think we should talk to NIMCOG.
Yeah, NIMCOG.
NIMCOG, MRPC, Pepperell and Groton. And do that as a joint project for the high school and that intersection. And use monies for that.
Correct.
Now, because it's one nineteen and it's one nineteen in Pepperell, who owns this? Does the state control one nineteen?
We speak.
I I.
I would have to check, but I think.
In in Pepperell and Groton, Groton owns one.
Yeah, it bounces around. Like, there's state routes, it bounces around in some towns, but a lot of it.
Right, because I was getting a lot of conversation, to put it lightly, um why Groton was fixing their one nineteen and it's, well, that's because Groton owns that portion of one nineteen.
State controlled.
In that we are.
And I think Pepperell is.
Well, NIMCOG would know. NIMCOG is the is the one, because Pepperell's in NIMCOG, right?
So, yeah, yeah, Pepperell is NIMCOG, Groton is MRPC, same as us. So my thought is, if we did the implementation grant.
Right.
Applied for it and were lucky enough to get it, we could get the planning done. And then we put it on the tip, because it's one nineteen.
Right.
Um, and that's what I think.
I'm in agreement with that, one hundred percent.
I brought this up at the MJTC meeting. Um, and just this last month, the May MJTC meeting, I I said, this is what I think we should consider. And MRPC did not run screen in the way they know. They they kind of, it was, what's his name, Brian Bellerty? Um, he was pretty positive about that. And he said that there was already, the thing was safe. It's a net, net zero? Is that what it is? You want to get it so there's zero fatalities on the road, so you have to have a something zero study. Which we don't have. But we have had a study previously, like two thousand nine, I think he said, for that intersection. And it wasn't bad enough. Um, but now it may be. So we need to have, so we could build on that study. It's a positive that there's already been a study done. And we could build on it. So I think we should explore that.
Now, would crossing light and a stoplight be part of that as well?
It all depends.
What the study says, because the study will.
That would be the hope, is that they would put some more traffic controls in there.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
Clean that up.
Perfect for circle.
Yeah.
I I mean, it really is.
You mean at the Proctor Road, you mean?
Because it's not a.
That should be.
Regular intersection.
Be some sort of traffic controller if it's better than what there is.
Right, right.
Drive by that every day it was.
Yeah.
It's really bad.
Well, I I just, I believe we need to do something about that. That's a a really important thing, because it's been talked about for as long as I can remember here in town. Is that, and there's been a lot of accidents.
A lot of accidents.
Um, and you know, I I wanted, I want to be able to do whatever we need to do to get this rolling. If this is going to help us get it on the tips, then.
Well, we, it would. I I think, so that's what I'm thinking. That's my thought.
And they would make the determination whether Proctor was the better place or um closer up to McDonald's, right? That would all be determined by.
Well, the survey would tell you all the options.
And I I just think you have to take those two things together.
Yeah.
And because this intersection is in Townsend, it's Pepperell or Groton, I'm not sure exactly.
Would be both.
Um, it it's a, it's a joint effort with a joint planning focus.
And I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe that if we are um joining in with other communities, it's look, it looks more favorable.
Right, but the question I have, if we we if we join in with other communities, can they only look at Proctor and not look up through the at the shopping center exit, which we have most of the accidents happen or?
We we would control the scope, we would control the scope of the study, because that would be in our application.
It's just.
And we would probably pull it up to Dunkin Donuts.
The Dunkin Donuts, I would say.
Say, and then probably Proctor Road, there's not a lot out. There's a ways before there's another intersection there. Yeah, but the Proctor Road up to the Dunkin Donuts, because of all the commercial traffic that
Yeah.
Put there is probably what you do is or maybe up to the new food truck lot.
Okay.
Actually. Actually, you would probably want to do, I mean, in all seriousness, if the food truck lot ever got approved, you'd probably want to do it up to the food truck.
So Eric, what are the next steps if we're interested in doing that for shared streets for all? Can you contact your town parks in Pepperell and Groton? And see what they think about it?
Yes.
Because they might have other ideas, but they could still, as a community, apply for themselves.
Right.
Because this would be more MRPC and, you know, because NIMCOG um applying for that.
Right.
And so after you talk to your town parks, maybe talk to um Brad Harris at MRPC. And whoever the NIMCOG people are.
I see, I know the NIMCOG. I just don't know the MRPC before that.
Yeah, so I would talk to Brad Harris. The MJ, he he runs the MJTC meetings. The Monarchus of Joint Transportation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Meetings, so he's probably the person.
Brad Harris, MRPC.
Are we all good with that? I am.
Okay, so I'll I'll follow up with the communities and the regional planning agencies and see if we can arrange some sort of a Zoom meeting where we can all talk about this specific issue. Among those, you know, five kind of group, you know, five entities and see what the next step would be. And ideally, as you say, it would be the regional planning agencies that would take the lead on this.
Yeah.
With a little bit of help from us, but hopefully they would.
I I mean, it might be aggressive to think that we're going to apply first round, but there will be a second round. You know, if we can't.
Sure.
Pull it to, it's pretty quick.
Yeah.
If you're going to do um for August, September timeframe. But they'll know better, I guess, how long it takes to. Or it might be that, okay, we go for it.
Well, that's, and I was just going to say that. I think we would take their lead if they think that that timeframe is doable, then let's go for it, you know?
Yeah.
So, okay.
We'll do that.
So and and then the tip for the, you know, what to do about the.
The harbor sidewalk.
The harbor sidewalk thing, because we're going to have to adjust this. And this is back one pass. The only thing that's different is um ARPA, that should be seventeen, not seven, for the Greenville Road Bridge. Um, we split that in half. So three hundred thousand is now fire um EMS police. And it's three hundred thousand for the Greenville Road. So I have to get Jennifer, get me an update with one of these.
Okay.
I think back in January, we talked about allocating ten thousand dollars to buy COVID test kits.
Um, that.
That need is no longer here, because test kits are reasonably available.
We didn't allocate separate. We put that under ARPA fifteen. The other COVID-related expenses, public health. We thought there's a hundred thousand in there, and I I think a little bit has come out of there, like the maven, the border health bid or something. Um, but that's where it would have come.
Okay, well.
And so it wasn't spent.
I really it wasn't spent. It was allocated. I just want to tell you, you could unallocate that amount, because I think test kits.
Yeah, we we did vote to allow purchase, but it would have come out of that. Out of ARPA fifteen.
Yeah, and the Board of Health just also submitted, or just um I I got a uh an email from Carla.
Yeah.
That um was for free testing. There's a lot, you know, you could apply for it to get free tests.
To get free tests, and it'll take several locations and time.
Right.
But that's no ARPA.
So it would be free, so they would need the funds.
Right, so we would, yeah.
So we just put that hundred thousand in there for things like.
Catchings.
You know, just that sort of stuff.
Ten thousand you won't need, so you just find another.
All right. Sounds good. Um, so and all of these will, once we get the policies in place, we need to the departments will need to be notified as to how to spend what they have.
Right.
So um anyway. That's all hetero of the projects. So moving on to five point one, town administrator updates.
All right, um. So I just had a couple of, well, a few updates to touch base with the board on. Um, the first is um I just want to let the board know that postings for the Human Resources Manager and Town Accountant have been reposted on NMA um for thirty days, so if we get any candidates that seem likely. Um. I wanted to touch with the board as to how you would feel about um how we should proceed on that. This will be the first job that kind of reports to the board, that I've been responsible for dealing with. So I was just looking for some guidance and stuff. Do you want me to do a first round of interviews and bring finalists to the board? Do you want me to do all the interviews and bring the finalists to the board?
Um, I think, I know that what we've been doing is, we always had one board of selectmen person at the interviews. And we um and and then we picked the who was going to be on it. I don't know if we, who was going to be on the team. I don't know that we did that at the meeting. You know, we just.
I think it was whoever was free, wasn't it? Whoever was available.
Yeah.
Can you do this date? Yeah, yeah, you know.
I think it was sort of an informal selection committee.
Yeah.
More than just the town administrators, one of you.
Yeah.
Then you collectively presented that, which is the choice for the boards to hire.
But I am good with you, if if everybody else is, with you doing the first round. Um, and you're here every day. And uh, so I I don't know. What do you guys think?
I'm fabulous for that.
Okay.
So I I'm my plan, assuming enough qualified candidates, would be to do a first round. Come up with a few, one or two or three likely people that we would be willing to hire. I think we'd be willing to hire. And then have a a second interview with a with one of the members of the Board of Selectmen. And then the second interviews, we choose a finalist and we bring that person to the board.
I I think for HR, I think that's fine. For the accountants, I I would want, I'm trying to think, who would maybe talk to Melissa and Vicky?
I think that was such a team we were having mine was assessors, treasurer collector.
Right, right.
Someone from the select board, the town administrator.
For the town.
True.
And you might have people that you want besides yourself when selecting for the HR mix, at least.
Yeah, okay.
So. Yeah, I'm good with that. The HR reports to you, not to anybody else, so. No one works with everybody, but um but reports to you, just um.
Okay, that's, uh, so that's, that's that. I also.
Can you just clarify me on the HR position? Are they um payroll as well?
No, the HR manager position would be located up here in the Board of Selectmen's office. Yeah.
So payroll's going to stay where it is.
There's a job description on.
Yeah, I saw it, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, that's the anticipation is that they would separate that role from the treasurer's office. Uh. The second issue is, um, we had a question, I had a question from Emily that she asked me to bring him to the board about whether or not there's any knowledge of the board of sale Pine Ridge.
You mean overall sale?
She she heard a rumor about it and wanted to know if the board had heard anything about it, because she hadn't heard anything.
That's a condo. Those are all separate. Those are also affordable housing units, so it's, there's no unless they were changing on management. All the, all those apartments, oh.
It's the guy who, that remember, burned down.
That's right.
Then he and he got, we had a plan and never rebuilt the building.
I haven't heard anything.
Even though we approved that.
I haven't heard anything. I can find out, though.
But I Emily just wanted to know, because she she had heard a rumor, wanted to know if there's any.
Yeah, Pine Ridge is in condos.
I'm thinking of something else. Strike that, reverse it.
Okay, um, that was just a pressure of the board. Um. I wanted to let the board know that I I'm going to be talking to the auditing firm to um request an amendment. Their contract is currently scheduled to expire like in June, at the end of June of twenty twenty four. I believe, or maybe it's twenty twenty five, but they won't be able to complete their work on the end of the fiscal year, by the end of June.
Wrote it wrong.
So it needs to extend into into July, or the into into. So it needs to extend into, into July, or the, into, into a another, it needs another month or another two months for them to close the books.
About the, it was the item committee that wrote that.
Yeah. So it shouldn't be a big deal. I could just, I, in order for them to complete the contract, they're gonna have to, by definition, work past that, so it should, it should, it should be a relatively minor change. I just wanted to let folks know that. I'm just gonna give them a call to try to do that now while I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Instead of in the middle of June of twenty twenty five scrambling to try to get a contract amendment.
Yeah.
Um.
Good catch.
Yeah.
I cannot take credit for that. That would Terry care. A question came up, and I know that Ross and Chaz are already aware of this issue with landscaping, the plans for landscape, landscaping contract in FY twenty three. So my understanding is that the, the budgeted amount for, I think it was CBF, who's the current landscaper, was taken out of the FY twenty three budget, and smaller amounts were put into the parks and cemetery budget, so that they would then handle the landscaping, I think.
And facilities, we didn't take out the whole amount of the contract from facilities. We took out, I think.
Ten thousand.
Twenty three thousand.
Oh, yes, yes.
So six thousand, I think, remained in facilities for mowing, and we put ten thousand into eight to ten thousand, I'm not exaggerating. Into cemetery and parks to cover manpower and machines. Right. So in order to save money since the other, so what was the question?
I guess I just was trying to get my handle on what the anticipation was of this, of that that, how we, how the board envisioned that process to go forward with that split of funds.
I envisioned that facilities would do town hall. And that cemetery and parks, and this is from discussions, would do all the other buildings for mowing. The current contract with CBF is not, is through the end of this fiscal year. So through the end of June, everything should be covered as it has been covered. It's from July first.
Sure.
Forward, so through June of next year, so this fall and then this spring.
Okay.
So that's what I envisioned, that Roger would be hiring help to do the mowing that needs to be done for anything that CBF did.
My understanding, just to be clear, was that facilities was to do town hall. And Roger, or the Parks and Cemetery, will be doing all of the other facilities.
Yes.
Roger would pick up town hall.
If that's the case, then we should move some more money.
I thought it was twelve thousand, six thousand, six thousand.
I thought it was ten thousand.
I thought it was.
But I have to look and see. I thought it was ten thousand. And that more, six thousand was in labor and four thousand was in equipment. I'm not certain. I'd have to look back through my budget, you know, revisions. And then, but we didn't take out, the contract itself was like twenty eight five. And we took out twenty three thousand. So that left fifty five hundred for facilities. And I don't know why I thought, I thought it was a discussion between Roger and Rob, and, and Rob was gonna do town hall.
Right, that's, that was my understanding as well.
Roger was gonna do the library and anywhere else that needs done, the reading room.
They did a lot for the parade, which we'll get to the announcements, but they did a wonderful job having all of the areas.
Well, apparently, the town hall was done by CBF. The day that we called, that all the texts and the calls were going. So I don't know if Roger came out and did it again. I have not spoken to him since.
Yeah, I can't, I.
So I'm going to have a meeting with Roger and Rob, and I just wanted to know what the board's position was.
My understanding is facilities this year, and there was five thousand or so left in. And that, can you tell Ross how much we made? I thought it was ten thousand.
We cut down, well, took the budget from fifty seven to thirty one four, so it's about forty five thousand.
Okay, so that's a thirty five hundred. We acted by six and then four. Six on the upper piece and four in the lower piece. You know, it has two pieces. There's salary in this section and there's expenses down. We are only gonna do eight and we changed it to ten.
And I do believe the discussion, if I remember correctly, is that they were gonna work out the details themselves.
I just want to make sure that I sit them down and have them work out the details.
Yeah.
And I wanted to just have the, I don't think we need to know the exact numbers now. We, those are findable off, outside of board time. But I just wanted to know what the board's thought process was, and thank you very much for clearing my mind. Some positive news. We are going to be part of a fairly positive write-up in Planning Magazine. Regarding planning for rural resilience. So they submitted a draft of the article. They did all their own research. They submitted a draft of the article to the Land Use Department.
Who is that?
It's Joanne Nado and Bella Purdy, the two, one of them is an environmental, AICP Environmental Planner with Weston and Sampson in Massachusetts. And the other one is a climate resilient specialist with Weston and Sampson, based in Virginia. So it's a national, it's a national publication.
My MVP star.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's about, it's, it's a it's, I mean, it's a good article talking about the things that the town has done.
Direct, direct work of the Planning Board for their MVP.
So once it gets, once we get the final copy of it, I'll make sure the board gets it. We'll probably put it on the website. And post it on Facebook. Which brings us to the next issue, which is we have obtained the rights to an official town Facebook account, an official town Twitter account, and an official town LinkedIn account. So Harrison's been working, I'm sorry, he's not here, but he's been, you know, knocking that stuff out. We are now working on an updated section to the social media policy. Which we will hope to present to the board next meeting.
Seven, not next week?
Yes, next week. With the goal that we don't want to make those live and active until we have a social media policy that governs how town employees are gonna be using social, official town social media sites. But the idea would be that this would be the kind of place that we would post things, like in an article in Planning Magazine about the town. Post things about board meetings and commission meetings. And generally begin to have a presence on Facebook.
So I have a question about Facebook. So is this interactive? Or is this just where we're putting things out?
So the, the goal at the beginning is for us to be just putting out kind of factual things about, about the town. I don't anticipate us in the rollout stages of this doing anything that would, where we'd be soliciting comments or
Okay.
Anything like that. I do know that that can be a little bit hairy in the social media world. And so we would just be kind of using as a platform to put out pieces, factual pieces or information that might be useful to town visitors, with the goal of making it a more robust platform to get out information about, about all sorts of things, like, you know. I think one of the things we're likely to do is Emily's gonna be working to have little blurbs about, you know, department heads in their departments and what they do. And so that might be something that we might roll out on. You know.
Also, if done properly, it could be a very good marketing tool to make towns like a recreational community. You're looking for a good hiking trail. We have our maps of all the hiking trails, things like that. Right.
And so it, I think the goal would be to use the website and Facebook and Twitter in concert. I think LinkedIn is a little bit different. It's, it doesn't have the same sort of kind of use as a, as a marketing or a kind of a factual generating tool, but we did want to have it. Because Facebook gets a lot more traffic than I think the town's website, or the town's website is doing very nicely. I think you, we might be able to drive some traffic from Facebook to, to, to information on the town's website that we put out about events that are coming up, or about hiking trails, or about, you know, you know, make some economic development pieces, talking about little businesses, things like that. But for baby steps, the first thing we're gonna do is come up with a policy and put it in front of the board about how we're gonna use social media. So I definitely let folks know that. So I, I think that before I get to the last item, I think it's appropriate for for us to recognize Ross on the eve of his last day in this town administrator contract. I, I have known him the shortest of, I think, anyone in the room. And so I, I can only say that he's been a valuable resource to me over the last couple of weeks. And I can only imagine what a nightmare it would be to come into a job like this without having someone like Ross to stand there and kind of spoon feed me the things I need to know as I'm, as I'm looking for them. So I, I really appreciate all the help that you have given me over the last couple of weeks. And the foundation that I've seen and what you've done for the town over the last ten months is amazing.
And Ross, thank you so much for coming.
And staying.
Taking care of everything and staying.
Well, I want to take moments to thank the board. All three of you and Joe and Paul Theresa for supporting me, for being a pleasure to work with. And had really good conversations, a lot of good ideas going back and forth, but you've always supported me to come up with. And I want to commend you for the work you put in as part of the first transition. You guys were town administrator and the tech department for four months.
Two months, three months.
Public, huge thanks for stepping up beyond the twice a month meetings. You did a lot. But I enjoy your support. I also want to commend the department heads. You've got a very good set of department heads and staff. They're the ones who do the real work around here, and they've been a pleasure to work with. The voters are at home. I want to thank them for supporting the budget we put forth at the town meeting. I think that's a pledge that's needed to keep the town moving ahead, and you're always there. Thanks for supporting. I've enjoyed my time here, and I wish you all the best luck going forward. You're in good hands.
Well, I'm really glad that you two had time to work together. I thought that was important. Thank you for hanging in.
So I, I, which brings me to kind of the next piece of my agenda, which is I have been talking to Ross about him possibly sticking around in a different role under contract to help with three kind of discrete items. The first is the ongoing MCAD case. That we know that there's a, a hearing scheduled for the end of June. But I think Ross will tell you, and in my experience, that will not be the end of this, and so being able to have kind of a formal agreement whereby he's, you know, participating in that defense, I think would be helpful to the town. The second would be, the second item would be to assist with the town in municipal aggregation, energy aggregation.
Very good.
Which is something I know I've, we've talked about, kind of generally, and Ross and I have talked about it more specifically. And I think it's a, a really, a really good idea. And one of the benefits of Ross's experience is that he has done this specifically with other entities, and so he put forward a kind of a proposal, spec sheet that included that as part of some contracted work that we would have over the next year or so. Working towards getting towns involved in municipal aggregation. And the third would be as a town administrator consultant in preparation for the FY twenty four budget and kind of any other emergencies that come up. I think that formalizing that arrangement certainly helps for me, but I think it would also be helpful for the town, since he was such an integral part of the last budget process. For him to be willing to work with us a little bit on the next budget process, I think would be really helpful in the institutional knowledge he has from his time here. Given that, as scary as it is, I think we're gonna start the next budget process in six months or so. Be, being able to have someone with Ross's experience to help us.
And he learns the budget, especially since we don't have the ten minutes that we have during that whole time. One or the other of you would be good to have. So I have a question about municipal aggregation. Does that include community aggregation too?
I am willing to do both. It's up to you and maybe the Energy Committee has to.
Right.
Whether it's one or the other or both.
Yeah, I mean, my, my preference would be to take a big bite and go for community aggregation that includes all of the municipal infrastructure.
I, I think that, well, you'll have to talk to the Energy Committee. Somehow they were two different companies or some such thing.
Well, there's consolidating municipal buildings. There's one purchasing block, instead of having several, and probably more, you call it a water apartment. Structure.
Right.
That's one piece. That includes a broker. The other is the municipal aggregation, where you combine all the residents in the one purchasing.
Okay, I have those switched in my mind, yes.
And there are separate projects, but both can end up reducing costs to the town.
And to the residents.
Into the residents, and that is something that I know is a big concern to the residents, the, the cost of the utilities.
Yeah.
And if we, if we as, as a board can do something about that, then I'm one hundred percent for it.
Should we need a vote?
Well, so I, I would, I would like to, if the board would authorize me to sign a contract with, sign an agreement with Ross to have him continue on with the, under the parameters of the, of the agreement that we negotiated, which is seventy five dollars an hour for his services as, for the MCAD case and for the town administrator consultant piece, and a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour for his services for municipal aggregation. We can, the goal would be to, to, for me to finalize the negotiation of the contract, which is really very straightforward. It doesn't have a lot more than that within the contract. And and encumber the funds in the FY twenty two budget, so we can pay for them, start paying for the contract now and use that.
I'm just really concerned about the optics of it, with, with still paying for the previous town administrator. Then we have you to take over, which, as you know.
Then we have you to take over, which as you know, when I met you the first time, I did talk to you about coming together with a plan on unitile and something that I thought you would take over As a part of your duty. So um I I'm just concerned with the optics now. It's like to me, we put out there, you know, that we're looking for. We can't keep the budget. We can't meet the budget and the overrides. And now We still have three, now we have three town administrators on the budget. That all said, there's so much value there. So it's it's a hard, it's a real hard choice.
Well, the the, as of July first, um, there is, you know, The the former town administrator is no longer.
That's July first today, don't you? Well, no, I don't think so. It's next year.
It's next year, next July first.
Next July first. I was gonna say, the timing's so bad. If it if that's what I thought, like if we decided it was this year. And I I think I would have absolutely no problem with that.
For me, the the number one is a no brainer. Number two is the Um, municipal aggregation. Um, the if, the first one, the M cap, Ross wouldn't even be involved if he hadn't have been here aside. And so I I think we have to have that in very least. Ross's experience for municipal aggregation and community aggregation, that was um That was one of the reasons that we liked you when we interviewed you, but if there wasn't time for that to happen. So um I I am good with that. That's a specific thing that you can help us with. And the other one, um, the, you know, budget consulting. I I think might be useful because of Ross's experience with us and now, so Do we have a cap On what we can spend, you know?
So Ross and I haven't discussed the, so the, in all likelihood, the bulk of this is gonna be municipal aggregation. And that's what the bulk of this contract is going to be. And and so I I I don't know if there's an, if if there was an hours estimate that is is reasonable.
I've thought about that. It's really hard to estimate it. I know when I was doing it previously Working with the outside consultant, there was more than six meetings with four of the energy committee. Eventually presenting to town meeting, so there'd be six meetings per town. But those meetings, I mean, I could see spending hours with the energy committee explaining how it works and bringing in A couple vendors for them to look at, see how those three vendors are doing.
They already done that work. They already have two vendors and we presented.
They have is basically, what do you call them? The consolidation plan.
Yes, that's, they haven't done the community, that what I call the community settlement.
Okay, municipal one, which is when you get the residents involved.
They haven't done that.
That's a a long process. Multiple meetings, multiple educational meetings to explain to residents, hey, this is what's gonna happen when the selectmen now determine who you can buy your power. A lot of them resist that initially. Then you have to explain to them the benefits and and how they're protected. So it takes a while to do that. The consulting piece, I mean, I would be willing to answer phone calls besides budget just for historical things that come up. But those I think would be short hours. I mean, short time.
Yeah.
Phone call, fifteen minutes, half an hour here and there, not a lot of hours. Just the M C A D case, I can't pick that. I mean, we 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 think that's an open shut case.
And that's, I mean, so I It, I I I, we could certainly Put a, like, set up a contract with a with a not to exceed number.
If we're encumbering.
So we, I mean, we have to, we're gonna have to do that if we're encumbering a specific amount. So the contract would likely have a not to exceed number. And then, you know, go from there and see how we how we feel about What's happening next year, what the N C A D case is doing. Again, I, you know, I anticipate My questions for Ross, uh, for the town administrator piece are, as he said, likely to be relatively Short in the short term and then come to the budget, you know, talking about a few hours Here or there helping with the budget. So those are gonna be relatively short, short hours. But I mean, I I I understand the kind of the the concerns that have been laid out. I also think that the value is there. Especially for the municipal aggregation piece. I think that 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 has not only monetary value for the town and the money that we save And monetary value for the residents. I also think that there is a significant public relations Benefit to us being able to say to the residents, we're doing everything to get you to not have to buy your power from you, tell.
Yep.
You know?
Right, but.
Not to, there's a benefit there.
It's definitely a benefit, but just playing devil's advocate again, why is that at a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour to somebody House when I really thought that fell under your duties?
I think that the 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 reality is that even in large cities and towns, They hire consultants to do that work. I am not an energy aggregation specialist. I, you know, I I I could do things that are, that I think the energy committee has already done, which is I could find some vendors and have them come and schedule, you know, time with the With the, you know, with the energy committee and with the board of selectmen to talk about it. I, I mean, I could certainly do those pieces. But the kind of in the trenches work with the utility and with the Kind of the the energy committee talking about the the kind of the nitty gritty, you need to have someone who is Who is experienced in municipal aggregation to do it. And whether that's a Ross or a different consultant, you know.
And I know people are gonna talk to me about this because they talk to me about this all the time. So I'm just Trying to get answers for when people come up to me. What were you thinking?
Yeah.
Um, I agree, you know, I have no problem with that except for the optics. It truly is the optics. But I understand why it's of value. There has to be a cap, a hundred and twenty five Uh, per hour seems high, but I'm sure if we went out to say, sign a private consultant, it would be in that range too. Um, I'm certainly not saying we're not getting that value. I'm just saying with What's going on with the budget and whatever, can we generally do that? In the end, the 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 number one complaint that I had, the number one every time that anybody stopped me is We can't afford your mental. And if, you know, if it's only gonna cost us a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour to get that fixed, then.
No pressure.
I'm I'm charging that rate because that's a consulting rate that I charge and pay. I also will take more project management skills and involvement. And testifying about something that happened at M C A D board Or answering phone calls, explaining this is how it's done. Those are relatively Easy. Project management of doing municipal aggregation or solid purchases is a lot more to be involved.
And just out of.
I don't have any problem with you setting a cap. If you hit that cap, you can end the contract or extend it. I I The right here for the draft contract and it's got like seven day cancellation terms in it, not several months or years.
No severance, no severance at all.
Hopefully to make that, if things don't work out for either party, you say, fine, thanks.
Right.
We're out of here.
I my my reason for the cap is just the encumbering.
Yes, no, I think I, we're gonna have to mechanically do it that way.
Available one, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to do that.
Yes, and so that's something that I'm working on now is figuring out what kind of flexibility we have to.
And it has nothing to do with whether I agree with this or not, but do you carry a P M I, a project manager certificate or?
I have been project manager enough times. I get the task.
I just carry them. Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. So is there a motion to enter into, to um, to Have Eric bring a contract to us to um Fire Ross as a consultant for the three reasons. Is that what we're looking for? With the three reasons you mentioned.
And what time then? Are we talking?
I think we're talking between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Well, in all likelihood, I would bring the contracts at the next meeting because we want to encumber the funds sooner rather than later.
Right, okay, and the term of the contract.
The term of the contract would, I mean, I think we, it would technically run through the end of the fiscal year, the next fiscal year. Or until such time as the tasks are finished. So if things are accomplished before that, then that would be the term.
So I guess this means I hang on to the last.
That means you'll have another food on your plate. Both of them.
I was gonna help before I got here.
Okay, so um, is there a second? Can we get a second?
Was there a motion?
Was there a motion?
I thought that there was.
Okay, I move that we, um, I can make a motion, right, that we um Uh, have Eric bring forward a contract For um, the, for Ross consulting on the three reasons that um, or discuss.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor or let's just do our, Theresa?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Exenderianian, yes.
So Go on the list for the seventh or the.
So that's, that was the end of mine.
All right, thank you. Um, any reports from the Y phone?
Thank you.
All right, the general president, so.
Okay, um, I haven't met with the accountant yet because I know we're getting new one in, so I'm holding off on that. But I did meet with pretty much everybody else. Um, as um, recently met with the veteran agent, uh, everything was good there. He had nothing that he wanted to Add. Um, the energy commission wants to do, they, by who directed before, I guess, I came on to the board, But they were directed by a board to come up with a master energy plan.
That's correct.
And so they're looking to the possibility of having two alternatives added.
I thought I saw an email from Ron.
They said they determined they probably don't need them, but they still feel that it might be in the best to have it. But they do have an alternative solution if you don't agree that they need two more alternatives.
I thought that um, Ed Herman said he would head up the energy master plan segment.
But if you look at the rest of that email, he said, you know, we could still use the two alternatives.
Two alternatives, that's what I saw too.
So let's put that on the June seventh. So these are the alternates for the energy committee itself, not for the energy master plan.
Correct, so that they have, their concern is to have a quorum. And that'll allow them the ability to have a quorum more, uh, more often.
And then as part of the historic commission liaison, I did attend the meeting on the gazebo. Uh, it was well attended and they had very well picked it came, both sides came in with uh Lots of notes and lots of uh Give and take between the the two sides. And the one thing that they asked, it wasn't a vote that we had, but we did ask them to come back to us on the ninth. There's some things that they want to look out, June ninth and the seventh. Oh, seven, I'm sorry, next Tuesday. They're asking, uh, based on some, um, pieces that they It's not like major things, like they came to us originally, but pieces about Where this fits best and whatever, if they can make that, uh, June twenty first and it's the twenty.
Oh, they want to change that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they can change that.
Yeah, so they just want your permission to extend that and come back because they think they'll have a a much More robust, uh, well put together plan if they can have a couple more weeks.
Okay, so we'll we'll go with June twenty first, you know?
And that's all, then, Jim?
So can I have a question on that?
Sure.
Um, the gazebo was a separate committee and that was put under me, I thought.
You were the one for that gazebo.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under the historic district commission.
No, well, it was a public meeting anyways.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just saying. Because I've been been very active with conversations with both of them and We gave instructions for them to work it out, so I kind of didn't go to the last meeting just because I didn't want.
Well, I did say that you were their liaison, but I wasn't here as a liaison. I was just here.
Yeah, Chas had also been, um, when they formed that committee,
Yeah.
We assigned, we, the board of selectmen voted for Chas to be the B O S rep for that committee. Um, so anyway.
No usurping of your powers intended.
I had to deal with my power because I was ready to hand over the stuff.
All right, so we'll move cemetery and parks to the twenty first.
Yes, that's, and I thank you for the both of them for working as diligently as they are.
They both came in with papers, ideas and.
Which was, I think, a really good thing.
Anything From you, Chas, for your next report?
Oh, um, a lot, but nothing really to report. Um, as you saw, the um, the rep commission is all ready to go for the summer. That has been solidified. Thank you for your help in talking with the um, schools and getting that all set. The um I've been working closely with the planning board as well and in some of the issues that That they were facing, which I thought, um, they're doing, they have a lot on their plate too. The historic district commission has a lot on their plate. They're so, they're being very active, the boards and committees, and I just, I I really appreciate all of their Their, everybody's work in regards to that. Um, but that's really all I have to report for now.
I have absolutely nothing to report. Nothing, Chris.
You've been on vacation. That's okay.
So anyway, all right.
It's okay. We took care of everything.
Thank you, everybody, for taking care of everything. Um, all right, so moving on to announcements and communications.
I know. Okay. I just want to thank all those who showed up and lined the parade route on Memorial Day. It was nice to see a bunch of flag raisers. I have to give credit to Chaz who kept a duck jacket on the entire time When I gave up in all whites instead. I just couldn't do it.
And I wasn't in heels like.
I don't wear heels.
You liked the whole thing in heels and that was impressive, that's.
But yeah, it was really, uh, great to see that we still can have that. I mean, it was our first one back in a while. Uh, and the parade route was lined the entire way, flag raised and, yeah. And just I love to see the town appreciating, um, the Memories that we have and the band concert, you know, happening, uh, the concert and a lot of people were up for that. It was great.
It was, it was impressive. It really was impressive. The beach, um, they had the boat with the flowers Um, for for each of the the bridges. It was really, it's just very impressive. And it's good for the for the um, the kids in town to see all of, uh, everybody, I mean, the boy scouts and the cub scouts and The the girl scouts. It was just nice. It was a nice thing. Tessa was there, so. Yeah, we all had fun. And then, of course, the band and the concert, so.
And I liked a lot of history. I did not know that, uh, Gold Star, the eight people that died in World War Two, is solid cement. But it had some damages and they had to get it repaired and they found out it was repaired, so.
So I agree. I thank everybody for coming out. It's a, it's a good thing.
All right, thank you both for being there and you, Eric.
I was just watching.
You much, Bob?
All right.
Well, I do, I do have an announcement, or actually, it was, it's more of, it's a P S A for volunteers.
Oh, go for it, yeah.
Um, so we have, um, our webmaster has updated all of the volunteers, um, spots that we have available. Um, we're asking for anybody to please look on the website, see, um, if you have any, any assistance for us, we'd greatly appreciate it. If you have any ideas in regards to any of the open positions, please just fill out a volunteer form And submit it and somebody will definitely get back to you as soon as possible. But I think on on Sunday, it really showed me that the community was there behind. I mean, we have to do A lot of functions here in town on that. a lot of functions here in town um, that don't, that don't have anything to do with town hall, whether it be for the flags that you see on the flagpoles. I know Betty May did a wonderful job organizing everything and putting everything together for Sunday. And there were a lot of um, pieces to that, uh, but we're looking for anybody's help. So if you need any help or need any questions, feel free to call the selectman's office with any questions or fill out a volunteer form and submit that.
All right, thank you. Um, our next meeting is Tuesday, June seventh at six P M. Is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bill stable warrants?
I make a motion to review and sign payroll and payroll warrant.
Is there a second?
Uh, session?
Well, there's one right here and we meet next week. So do we need to be out of session? I don't fix.
It's probably best to make the warrant to do the bonus sessions in case something comes up and then they're not all there.
I amend my motion to review and sign payroll and bill payable warrant out of session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Theresa A. Morris, yes.
Chaz Exandurianian?
All right, and with that, we are going to um, move to executive session and adjourn from executive session. So this is our motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn from general session at nine, excuse me, eight fifty-five and move into executive section. So votes may be taken pursuant to conduct, to conducting Saturday sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Can I do it, say? Please, chief.
And we will adjourn from, we will adjourn the meeting from executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Theresa A. Morris, yes.
Chaz Exandurianian, yes.